Good morning.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. I want to welcome everybody here this morning. We'll begin the meeting with by asking Chaplain Ted Stackpole with U.S. Foster Missions to come forward for our invocation, and Commissioner Rawls will give us our pledge. Please stand if you're able.
Do your heads with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we recognize your great creative power. The earth that we live on is because of you. We recognize your great mercy. Your forgiveness extends towards us. We recognize the gifts that you've given to us, the children in our streets and in our homes are from you. And today, I specifically pray for those that work and volunteer in our educational system. Thank you for their calling, service, and sacrifice to help guide and educate our children and our community's future. We pray that every child will discover the joy of learning, the enrichment that comes with healthy relationships, and the resolve to press through the challenges that they will face this year. We know that one day, we will all be replaced in this room by another generation, and our prayers is that they will excel in every way beyond what we have attained ourselves. May we all work together with your guidance, grace, and mercy to make this happen. Bless this commissioners' meeting today and everyone who is conducting business in this place. May it bring glory to you, and may you smile down on our beloved Putnam County. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Chaplain Stackpole and Commissioner Rawls. Commissioners, our first item of business is approval of the minutes presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of County Commission regular meeting July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
The regular workshop meeting July twelfth, twenty-two, and the specially called meeting July ninth, twenty-two.
Second. We got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey and a proper second by Commissioner Adamsak. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing not all in favor, and it gets saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. We have to wait till nine oh five to move into the Port Authority, so...
I tried to take a long time reading them.
I know. Okay, it's nine oh five, so I'll recess the Board of County Commission meeting, and I'll convene the Port Authority meeting. Commissioners, the first item of business is to approve the minutes, July twelfth, and then the workshop for July twelfth.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval on the Port Authority regular meeting July twelfth and the workshop meeting July twelfth.
Second. A proper motion by Commissioner Harvey and a proper second by Commissioner Adamsak. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and it gets saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Okay, we'll move down to our item of business procurement. Ms. Julianne, RFP twenty-two, that's twenty-seven pickleball court project.
Yes, sir Chairman. As explained in your agenda, the RFP was issued for the construction of the pickleball courts, and evaluation committee was assembled. We received one proposal. It did come in over budget, so that evaluation committee's efforts were focused on bringing the project within scope. There were a couple of different options that the evaluation committee evaluated in order to bring that project within scope and to still come out with an end product. The evaluation committee ultimately recommended award to the vendor for the option to build four courts in lieu of having fences around them. And so that is what is here before you today, is the official award recommendation to award the pickleball in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to court surfaces to build the four pickleball courts with everything except for the fencing at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of this item.
Okay, we got a proper motion to move this item forward by Commissioner Harvey and a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Open it up for any discussions, any questions?
I have a question.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
For the public certification, where is this being funded from?
Port Authority.
And is the Port Authority, is it going to have to pull any money in to close the deal on the property that we're looking to purchase if we spend this money?
We could.
So are we overextending ourselves? We've committed on buying property, we're committing on this. I just wonder, and then my next question, how does this benefit the Port Authority? Why would it not be coming out of a transfer from Parks and Recreation to pay for that?
So there's several questions there. On the note of overcommitment, when the board heard the request of the pickleball group two years ago, the board authorized a hundred thousand dollars to be allocated for the project. When the group heard, when the board heard the potential of buying the property, every quarter since then, the board has seen a general fund reserve balance with a tentative pending amount of money that is set aside in the event that we need to transfer it to buy those properties, with that you're still maintaining reserves above what is required by statute and even recommended by GFOA. So I do not believe that you're overcommitted.
Is this Port Authority reserves or is this general fund reserves?
This would have been Port Authority budget.
No, no, I'm saying is this general fund reserves or Port Authority reserves? The reserves you're speaking of?
It's neither. It's, the project will come from neither. The project will...
You said that the reserves were maintained at a minimum level. I'm saying is that general fund reserves or is that Port Authority reserves?
That's general fund reserves.
Okay, but we're discussing the Port Authority budget, which is a completely separate budget. It's mandated under the legislation that it maintains its own budget. So I'm trying to figure out why the reserve conversation for general fund comes in. If we're saying that we're going to pull money from general fund reserves, I got it. But is that the answer to the question, is we're going to take the general fund reserve money, transfer it into Port Authority, and then pay for this out of that?
Well, that's ultimately a board decision, but that is tentatively what's been shown to you all for the last six months in our reports, is that we've tentatively placed a placeholder in general fund reserves for, to transfer over to the port to buy that property if the board so desires. So yes.
The question that, my original question was, are we overextended as just a Port Authority? I think the answer in hearing is yes. We're going to have to move money in to cover this point.
You always do.
Right, because we don't have any money in the Port Authority, is the point. We've spent, we had one point two million not too long ago, and we spent some money here and we spent some money there on making some improvements, but the point is, is the legislation that established the Port Authority says that it shall, not might, shall have its own budget, have its own revenue, but...
It does.
We keep, for the sake, I don't know why the Port Authority even owns the property, to be honest with you. It's just another slush fund that we can use to make this happen. I'm obviously in favor of the pickleball project. I think it should have happened a couple of years ago, but I'm just a little perplexed as to why we do the shell game with the money moving in, moving out. Why not just establish a budget in Parks and Recreation to cover this, cover that in Parks and Recreation, because that's really what this should fall under and not confuse everybody. We start talking about the Port Authority being utilized for economic development, because the pickleball isn't for economic development, it's for recreation for our public. So I just wonder why we wouldn't put the money in Parks and Recreation and then do that.
Right, as we discussed two years ago, when we allocated these dollars, Triangle Park is owned by the Port Authority. And as the board has requested, we are working on bringing to the boards some information about which properties are owned and if it makes sense to move any of them. But as it stands today, the legal owner of that property is the port, which means the legal owner of that asset is the port. And that is why it is placed there. If we ultimately decide to move anything around, just as we do for all of our other funds and assets, then there would be an accounting transaction that reflects that to move it into the general fund.
So is my understanding then that only money from the Port Authority can be spent on Triangle Park?
No, as we have done in the past, we can move money from the general fund into the port, but the expenditure, once you're expending on an asset, it needs to come from the port so that it's then booked as a port asset.
Maybe if you ask the question, I guess, have we ever spent any money at a general fund directly to that property out of Parks and Recreation, let's say?
We would spend operational dollars in the course of our operations there, but capital dollars have all come from the port or via through the port. Project play. All of your projects that are out there, that are, that have ended in an asset being constructed or owned, have come through the port. Now, we can supplement the port with other funds, which we have and we do.
So back to my original question. If the Port Authority has no money, then what we're doing, and I'll use the term shell game because I don't know any other way to explain it, is for the, and this is for the public certification, the Port Authority really doesn't need a ball field. We obviously need a seaport, railways, highways, airport. Don't really know why we have this, and maybe it's a conversation for another day, but it sure seems logistically maddening that we have to move money around. You know, like I said last, a couple, our last meeting, we purport to balance our budget and get all this work done, but we don't include capital items in the budget because we can take that out of reserve money, but we're not spending reserve money to balance the budget, but in fact, we are. And this is, you know, just an example, and there'll be another one coming up later today regarding the lighting at the ball field, but it sure would be nice if, you know, for the public to understand that we don't really have it, we don't have the means to be able to put money in Parks and Recreation and focus on Parks and Recreation. We have to wait until other monies come available, not hiring employees, transferring money into reserves, being able to use that money to put in a pickleball court or putting up lighting or whatever, but I appreciate it.
Okay, any other further? Okay. All right, we got a proper motion on the floor and a proper second. All in favor, and it goes saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind if I take a point of order?
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Been working with the pickleball group, and Ms. Simons is full of energy and passion, and I appreciate that very much. There are some future needs that they're going to have, and we are working with organizations right now to minimize and help with those needs. I just want the pickleball group public to know that we are in talks with other organizations that want to help, and hopefully we can bring all this in at one time. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Administrator Suggs?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the conversation here this morning, but as county administrator, I think it's my obligation to, when we talk about where we funding expenditures from, whether it be from the Port Authority or from general fund, whether it be from Port Authority reserves or general fund reserves, I think it's imperative that for clarification, clarification for citizens who are watching on YouTube, to understand that there's no decision that is made on where we move money from without it coming to the Board of County Commissioners or either the Port Authority, which is also U5. So to use the term of a shell game, I think is inappropriate here this morning, so I just want to get that comment on the record. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Okay.
Yeah, so if you read the agenda, everything comes to the board via staff. We don't, we don't direct you guys to put it in our agenda to present us this way. It's presented to us, and then we're asked to vote on it. What's not presented are alternative methods or other ways of funding the county, and this is one of the things that I've been complaining about since I've been elected, is that, you know, if we budget for forty positions and we have twenty positions that aren't filled, we take that leftover money, we stick it in reserves, then we can use it to make up for shortages in other places. But I'm just saying, from an honesty perspective, we should at least be honest with the public and let them know what's really going on, is that we are using reserve money to buy fire trucks, to buy ambulances, to purchase stuff for Parks and Recreation. It's not like we don't use the reserve money. And that's what I'm saying. If we fully funded our budget that was presented to us a couple of weeks ago and put the capital items in there, the reserves would not be as robust as they are right now. That's the point that I was making. Thank you.
And I can appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, I do. And, but as you all, as all five know, that there is much discussion that goes into putting the agenda together. So it is an agenda that's put together by staff, but it's also an agenda that reflects the will of the commission, and if the commission would like to come in and discuss it, we're more than happy to set those meetings up. As you know, we do. Many of you take advantage of that, and I can't help it if commissioners don't want to come and visit with staff and get information upfront. But we've had that opportunity to do that for the four years, four and a half years I've been here, and if you choose not to take advantage of that for the last two years, I can't help that. But I will say this, and I'll say it again, it's inappropriate to call it a shell game when everything from the required budget approval comes to the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll move down to public comment on Port Authority items. Any individuals wish to make public comment on Port Authority items? Okay, any general discussion, commissioners?
I'd like to know what the status of the railway, the rail spur is?
The rail spur is complete as of last week. The asphalt was delivered, and the last segment of that rail replacement project was completed.
Are we going to have any other discussion with Veritas regarding that in the future?
As far as...
You did.
Yeah, we're going to have discussion with them in the future.
As far as them participating in, renting it from us, helping pay for the cost. We just spent four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on their behalf. I'm just wondering if there's ever going to be a time when we sit down and have a conversation with them. It's a rail spur that only benefits them right now, and sure would be nice if they could pay some lease on it, so in the future, as we do have to maintain it, we can maintain it and not have to pay for it out of our tax dollars.
All right, okay. Commissioner Turner?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's been established that Veritas is not the only possible user, they're just the most imminent user. So I don't have a problem going forward and having these discussions or whatever, but let's not try to vilify Veritas, let's enter into discussion on a solid ground with trying to come up with a solid solution that may or may not even be a problem to start with, that a rail spur is part of economic development, it really is. And so anyhow, that's all I want to say is, is I don't have any problem that we start. I think we actually talked about, talking to Veritas already about where this could go and how we could get this started, but obviously, you can't just go straight out and start taxing Veritas for a rail spur when they haven't built it into the cost of their existing bids. So anyhow, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls?
So it's not about taxing, it's about doing what's right. There is a rail spur that only benefits one business, because right near the yard, the money that we spent was because there was no maintenance that was done previously that could have widened the rail and made the curve deeper to handle the new locomotives. I get that point, but why would we not try to do something to capture funds in the future so when somebody has to come back in and reset the spikes, which have to be done periodically, we don't pay for it out of our tax dollars? It's paid for, I have an account set up to recover the money for using the rail spur. The rail spur does benefit them. They sat in here and told us that if that rail spur was not there, they would have to pay on one job, as I remember, about an additional four million dollars. So there's a huge benefit to them by saving that four million. We just spent four hundred and fifty, so basically, you know, that ten percent could easily be recouped over a period of time. That's all I'm asking for.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, everything this board does is economic development, in my opinion, and that rail spur is part of our economic plan, but so are our roads, and we allow businesses to use our roads. So let's not put our head in the sand and say we're going to look at one company. I'm looking forward to what that port's going to look like in the future. I'm looking forward to the economic development that that port's going to bring, and if we need to invest more money to bring more businesses, then this commissioner's on board with that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Okay, any further general discussion? Okay, I just want to, as chairman of this board and chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee, I want to thank the pickleball group for their relentless pursuit to get this completed, and hopefully this will move forward rapidly, and then maybe we can address the other needs later. But I just appreciate honestly everybody's efforts and patience through this, and also the evaluation board for their work also. So thank you. I will adjourn the Port Authority, and I'll reconvene the Board of County Commissioners meeting, and we'll move down to presentations. We were blessed this year to have a little different change in some of our staff, and we're able to employ some summer interns. So at this time, they're done with their internship and they're going to enter back into the working world or go back to college, and so Ms. Julianne Holmes Young is going to recognize each one of these individuals.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, this morning, we're here to recognize our summer interns. This year, administration put together an intern program that would allow our college students to gain valuable work experience while assisting Putnam County. Our interns provided service to numerous departments and gained experience rotating through various areas to get a hands-on look at how government works. We were very blessed to have them. They provided services to several of our areas who were short on staff or short on man and manpower and bodies, and so this morning, we're going to call them all up, and if everybody will just kind of hang with me. We have, in alphabetical order, Ms. Peyton France, who is a student at Stetson University, majoring in poli sci in the pre-law program. We have Ms. Reagan Grimes, who's a student at St. John's River State College, who's pursuing a degree in education.
Go Reagan.
We have Ms. Leslie Sims, who is a student at Stetson University, majoring in political science in the pre-law program. And he couldn't be with us today because he already had to return to school, but we also had Mr. Dre Wallace, who is attending Allen University in Columbia, South Carolina on a wrestling scholarship. So thank you to our interns. It has been a wonderful summer with your help. And commissioners, if you'll allow, we do have several sets of parents, so if you'll kind of do pictures one at a time, we'll do the France, we'll just kind of go in alphabetical order again.
You don't step here?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll start with Trayvon, since he's not here. Just a fine young man, when I met him about a month ago. And one thing I noticed about this young man, he just carried himself well, and as he said, they're going to, he's going to represent Putnam County at school in South Carolina, and he'll be on the wrestling team, and I'm sure he'll get into a fraternity and other things. One thing I noticed about this young man, he's not afraid of the weight room, I can tell you that. This man is chiseled. I have a relationship with each one of these young ladies, either with them or through their parents. So I'll start with Ms. Leslie Sims. I remember her mother and her aunt were younger than you, and they actually babysat my children a few times. Your grandfather has been one of my closest friends for years, and it does me good to see you achieve, and I know it does for Terry and Ms. Laura and your mother Gina and Les. So we're so proud of you. I want to give you this Putnam County pin, if you'll please wear it when it's appropriate and show where you're from, from Putnam County, okay? And also Ms. Reagan Grimes. Her father, JR, and Michelle, my wife taught both of them. Michelle worked with my wife, coached with my wife. Reagan and her brother Kyle, six years ago, seven years ago, when I was campaigning, we were going to the Fourth of July celebration in Inilokan, and Holly said, you know what? We need to take some cute kids with us. So who did we take? We took Reagan, and we took Kyle with us. And we had, it was probably one of my most memorable, most enjoyable parts of the campaign to take them with us, and I will always remember that, and you're making all of us proud. Thank you, Reagan. Peyton, correct? Your mother's Ms. Laura France with the school system, and your father is the Honorable Judge Chris France, correct? But my relationship goes back deeper with your great-grandfather, I believe, Mr. H.R. Buck Buckles. He was old enough to be my father. He's one of my father's best friends and one of my best friends, and our relationship that we had from me living beside him down on the river in St. John, on the St. John's River, and also through his passion for furthering education, through his work with the Catfish Festival and helping with cutting swamp cabbage from the first Catfish Festival until the time he could not do it, and I would call him on that week and talk to him about what we're going to do. And it's just truly an honor to give you this pin and see your successes so far. So thank you. All right, I think I'm done. Can we get the parents up and get pictures, okay?
We'll do, we'll do in each of your parents, and then we'll do one group with the group. So Francis?
You want to sit down there, or you want to, well, how do you want?
Um, just going down. Okay.
Let's get, we got all parents, we'll go up front. Okay.
Thank you.
I found one of your signs in my shit. Thanks for letting us have her. It's been a blessing. I had to make sure she was still working. I needed coffee today.
Thank you folks so much. You're blessed.
The Grimes? No, I will not make you look very short, babe.
This one, this, this one.
You're okay.
This one's coming up will make you feel short.
Can you see me now?
He's taller than me.
He's taller than me.
Ms. Leslie?
Proud moment right here. Did you get things up there?
Okay, my glasses on so I can see. I gotta get one more. I gotta get answers, sorry. Okay, okay.
Now, I thought it was pretty.
Are they right side up, everybody?
I've done that, so don't laugh.
Thank you, we appreciate it, Honorable. Thank you, thank you, Leslie.
We're gonna take a two-minute recess. In the Board of County Commissioners meeting, we'll move down to Item B, and ask the Honorable Matt Reynolds to come forward with a couple of recognitions of employees with the Clerk of Courts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank y'all for allowing me to recognize some of my staff for achieving some milestones in years of service. So, got two members of staff here this morning, the first will be Ms. Cindy Trent. Cindy, if you'll come up. This is presented to Mrs. Cindy Trent in recognition of your dedicated service to the Putnam County Clerk and Comptroller's Office for five years. Thank you. And as some of you may know, Ms. Cindy does some amazing work on our grants and on our ship program, so if we will, Ms. Cindy, we'll take a picture, and then we'll do Ms. Vicki next, so, thank you.
Where are you going with that, Matt?
Right back there, that's fine. Unless I'm blocking one of them, I might have to stand in between there.
Why don't you come over this side, near me?
Y'all gonna have to get me a stool if I gotta stand behind that.
All right, and up next, we have Mrs. Vicki Willock, if you will come up. Vicki, Vicki is celebrating 35 years with the Clerk's Office. Just last week, and if I can sidebar for just a moment, one of the judges, Ms. Vicki took on a challenge that was kind of out of the normal realm, it was something obviously that she had done before, but she stepped in and helped in court, and one of the judges had very, very high praise of Vicki. Said it was very long ruling days, but Vicki did an absolutely amazing, wonderful job. So, for 35 years, thank you so much. Thank you.
You wanna bring your family?
Yes.
Everybody, come on.
Come on, yeah, you're coming up. We're gonna come get you if you don't come up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, it's always good to be able to recognize employees, and yes, Ms. Cindy Trent has taken over with the ship program, and is at our A-hack meeting, and she's spot on, she doesn't miss anything, so, and so thank you, both employees. Okay, Item C has been pulled, Ms. Linda Myers spoke with me, or sent a text to me, an email, and that they're not, they're no longer accepting applications for this particular program, but she did say that the ones that have applied, depending on available funding, that they may be funding available for the ones that have applied, so, but the program has ended, so...
It didn't take long, did it?
No, it didn't.
No, it wasn't taking long.
Yeah, so, okay, we'll move down to Item Five, Public Comment on Agenda Items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the Board. It's not reasonable to expect that the Board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the Board received no prior information. We ask you to limit your comments to three minutes, and please fill out a comment card, which is an entrance and the exit of our building, and give them to Ms. Ashley over here to my left, your right. So anybody wishing to make public comment on agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the... Mr. Seymour will be at the end in miscellaneous items, okay? No, at the end of the meeting in miscellaneous items, yes, sir. Okay, so seeing no further comment, we'll close the public comment portion, and we'll move down to the consent agenda. Commissioners, any items that you wish to pull? I'll start with Commissioner Adamsak.
I have none.
Commissioner Turner.
I have none.
Commissioner Rawls.
I have none.
Commissioner Harvey.
I have none.
And I have none also.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Items A through G on the consent agenda.
We got a proper motion to approve the consent agenda item?
Under comment, was there a denum to this on the consent agenda, or is that on the workshop?
I think we got them all.
Yeah, there was one here, too.
Yeah, we got them all.
G is it? Okay, G is included, okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, a proper second by Commissioner Adamsak. Okay, any further discussing? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and I can sing aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, Item Seven, Honorable Matt Reynolds, Clerk of Court.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing this morning, thank you.
Okay, will you be attending the workshop this afternoon?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that item.
Myself and my staff will be here.
Okay, thank you. Appointments, any appointments, Commissioners? I'll start with Commissioner Rawls.
I have none.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
I have none.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes, sir. I would like to, for three at-large positions on three different committees, I'm assuming we'd need a separate one for each of the three, okay? So I'd like to start with a nomination that's an at-large position for Animal Services Committee of E.D. Wilson.
Okay, we don't need a second on that, what we need to vote on, is that correct? Okay, we got a proper motion, a proper recommendation to appoint E.D. Wilson to the Animal Service Advisory Committee. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, and I can sing aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, okay, passes.
Mr. Chairman, as an at-large position on the Green Belt Advisory Committee, I'd like to nominate Mark Spalding.
Okay, we got a motion to nominate Mark Spalding on the Green Belt Advisory Committee, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, and I can sing aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, okay, that passes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as an at-large position on the Planning Commission, I'd like to nominate Stanley Hodge.
Okay, we got a motion to nominate Stanley Hodge for the Planning Commission, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, and I can sing aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign.
That's all I have today, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Adamsak, did I ask you?
You did not. All of our microphones are pretty loud today, that's pretty cool. I have none for today, I do have one that submitted for the A-hack, and I just wanna reach out to her before I make that nomination.
Okay, all right, we're gonna try to get a meeting in September, 'cause we haven't had a quorum the last two, and we really need to get some work done in October, so we're gonna try to have a special call meeting in September, so if you could work on that, I would truly appreciate it, so we can try to get a quorum, and have that meeting really to orientate the new members, how we were gonna move forward in the October meeting, 'cause there's some homework that they would have to do.
I think I'll have that for the next meeting, Chairman.
All right, thank you, and I have no appointments today. Okay, we'll move down to Item Nine, Public Comment on Miscellaneous Items. This is the part of the agenda designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the Board, it's not reasonable that the Board will engage in debate or deliberation on items that they've received no prior information. Please limit your comments to three minutes, so, Mr. Albert Seymour? If you would come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and speak clearly into the microphone, please.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Albert Seymour, I live at 130 Lake Shore Drive, Georgetown, Florida, zip code 32139. I'm here today to ask for the county, and I've already did some talking with some of the, well, actually the Commissioner, and the guys at Public Works, and also Water Management, about the problem or issues that we are having in the neighborhood, and I'm here mainly asking about my street, which there's other things that need to be done in the neighborhood, but I'm asking you because I'm at the bottom of the neighborhood, and we're taking on water and ditches that's been there for years, we've been there for eight years, and we're yet to see someone come on that street and do particular works or whatever that needs to be done. We're flooding out. My backyard is filling up with water from the conservation area, which we, and Mr. Pickens spoke with yesterday on the phone, as he came out and took a look at what was going on, I also have some pictures from roughly a couple, a few weeks ago, how water is holding up around people's homes, and these issues I think need to be taken care of. Something else I noticed, too, is we had a smell, and I'm pretty much sure that maybe you've heard about it, when they put in my septic back in the day, Lane's septic, that he said a lot of people had septic tanks that were bad and open and stuff like that, and we're getting a smell. I had to put lime around my yard to try to keep the smell down. I'm a United States Army vet, I know what we had to do, the Vietnam area, to try to keep the smell down. I'm smelling feces in that water. It's stagnant, it smells, and it's got a little slime to it. Something is going on. I'm asking you, maybe if this is your jurisdiction, to try to come out and give us a hand, help us out, as the other people say that they was gonna do, get with the county and see whose issues is it really? Because they haven't been down there in so long, and like I say, eight years since we've seen it, since we've been there, and I'm sure before that, from the looks of it, it may be some time longer than that, that anything has been done there. We need the ditches cleaned. Lake Shore Drive at the end, I'll be a little brief, I'll maybe go over three minutes, but anyway, I appreciate you bearing with me a second. But at the end of my street, Lake Shore, is conservation, it curves around Lake Shore and the conservation there curves around and meets, that end of the ditch down there is just clogged up from the conservation on, and ditches, people put wooden bridges and stuff in to that area, not supposed to be there, not within codes or whatever, and they're sinked in and collapsed and stuff, and it's blocking the water. So if someone can, you know, we took a look at it, I showed it to Mr. Pickens, I got some pictures on my phone, if necessary, I can show you, but I really appreciate him coming out. The workers have come out and looked, I don't know exactly what they come back and say and stuff like that, but we haven't had a total good look at the situation, but my street, Lake Shore, is the bottom of it, that's where it's plugged up at, that's where it needs to be opened up at, where the water can get out, and it's coming from county roads all the way in, draining down, missing coverage, just turning the corner, and all of it comes and dumps on us down there, and I appreciate it very much, even for you guys listening to me. I'm a little nervous here, 'cause it's kinda hard to sit here and talk to this many people from a shallow voice like mine, it hurts that we ain't got nothing, so I'm asking you to please help, please.
Okay, Mr. Seymour, first of all, I want to thank you for your service to this country, a retired Army veteran and now disabled veteran, and I thank you for your service.
You're very welcome.
I've spoken with Mr. Seymour a few times, yesterday I did spend about forty-five minutes, thirty minutes riding around, and then actually, when we came back to his house to exchange some information, Alan Baggett from the Water Management called, so we took a phone call with Alan. Alan is going to look into what the Water Management can do on their end as far as the drainage, 'cause his property just does butt up against the Water Management property, and then the lots that are, I guess it would be south of Mr. Seymour that run down Lake Shore Drive, go down to the river, and there is some type of outfall there. From, before I turn it over to Commissioner comments, what we found out yesterday is JR's is correct, the Lake Shore Drive is a Class Four road, so most of the roads in there are Class Fours, which are classified as not a county-owned road, so that's the first obstacle there. Now whether we can do something with this drainage, because, you know, water comes off the, you know, hard roads, and it migrates towards Mr. Seymour, and then it's having trouble getting to the river, I don't know if we can do anything or not, but at least we can start discussions, so, Commissioner Rawls?
I'm really glad you had that commentary, 'cause it answered some of my questions, so, if in fact that's a private road, there's really nothing that we can do, but I don't know that we should be putting our water on your road if that's the case. I'm looking at it right now on Google Earth, and it looks like there's a lot of platted lots there, I don't know if they're accepted by the county, but you guys would have a big mess on your hands with those houses, or those lots were improved. The one statement that you made that really concerns me the most is that it sounds to me like you have an environmental or a life safety issue out there, and I wonder if the Health Department may not be a good resource right now as well. If you have human waste that's migrating onto your property from other properties, and I'm, am I assuming that that's correct? Is that what you're, okay, that's problematic, not just for you, but for everybody.
Right.
So I think at some point, that needs to be addressed, and I too thank you for your service, from veteran to veteran.
Yes, sir.
I know your commitment, especially for doing a whole career there, but at this point, I think we just need to get more information before we can do anything, because we're really not supposed to work on private property.
May I say something?
Yes, sir.
Okay, according to what Mr. Pickens has given me, and I've heard from a couple of other people back in the day, or whatever, that our roads are private, you have the green signs, I'm assuming green, that's your area, or they just out there for whatever reason, but we are in the county.
Yeah, I don't...
No white signs, as I know of, which are supposed to be private roads, nowhere in our neighborhood. I don't know if that matters, or whatever.
I don't think that's, that's correct.
I live on a private road, my... The sign's green, so...
Yeah, I think some of it may have to do with, for nine eleven, you know, for the nine-one-one addresses and things like that, that they named the roads, so, but, Mr. Seymour, again, okay, go ahead, Commissioner Harvey.
Mr. Seymour, thank you for coming and bringing that to our attention today. Do want to address the sign issue, 'cause I'm glad our Chairman had talked with you and gave the narrative that he did, it answered a lot of my questions, too. That was confusing when I first got here about the signs, green, white, what color, what does that mean? So now, when we replace signs on private, if it's private road, we put in parentheses under the name of it, private road, okay? So no more can people come in and say it's, they'll know it's a private road when they move out there.
So is that an issue that you're gonna come bring back to our neighborhood? Is you gonna change?
No, no, we only change them if they, if they're gone, people tear them up or get them run over, and we, but when we replace them, we try to put the private road on there, so people know then, and they can identify to that. But thank you again... But thank you again for your service and thanks for bringing this to our attention.
You're welcome, sir.
We'll see what we can get done. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr.-
Thank you, Mr. Seymour.
Okay.
Okay. Any other individuals wishing to make public comment? Okay, if not, we'll close the public comment portion, we'll move down to closing comments. County Administrator Terry Suggs.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you and good morning. Just want to piggyback on a couple of recognitions here this morning. You know, Honorable Matt Reynolds had a couple of folks here today, but Ms. Cindy Trent. Chairman, I believe you'll agree with this, we would not be where we are today without the assistance of Ms. Cindy Trent with the ship program. They do an absolutely outstanding job for, for, for those folks in that program, and I can't say as a county administrator enough good things about Ms. Trent and her abilities to keep us, you know, on the straight and narrow with, with all of her invoices and all of her contracts. She is outstanding and, and she's wonderful to work with. So thank you, Mr. Reynolds, for recognizing her here this morning. And for the folks that were here this morning, you know, as our interns, this was the first time we've actually done this for the summer. As you can see, we, we hit a home run here this summer with Ms. Reagan Grimes, Ms. Peyton France, Ms. Leslie Sims, and Mr. Dre Wallace. They all worked in different areas of the county, but what was more importantly is the fact that they got exposed to public, public service. And, you know, gives them a little more insight as to what we do here and hopefully when they graduate college, if, you know, they got bitten by the public service bug, there's a place for them, but just, it was a great opportunity for those folks and I'm extremely proud of the way they got dispersed throughout the county and I think it was a benefit to those as much as it was to us. And, Mr. Chairman, my last comment was, we were approached a couple, three weeks ago by Representative Payne. As you know, the state passed their budget. We were very successful this year with our legislative appropriations out of Tallahassee to the tune of about seven million dollars. But Representative Payne called and had a very short window of opportunity for us to possibly get a few more dollars through the summer session. So we went back and looked at what was important to the Commission and what some of the conversations were. So we did a quick turnaround on some, some requests and the request, I'm gonna name them here this morning, they're, they're in no particular order, but we've reached out to Representative Payne for some, some funding for some more IT to help us cover some of our security issues that we know is coming down. The fairgrounds, the fairgrounds has a grant for 1.25 million dollars, but their cost right now is about three million, so we've, we've reached out for some additional funding for the fairgrounds. Parks and Rec, we've reached out for some funding there, because we know our Parks and Recs need some, some additional work. Animal control, we've been trying to build the animal control facility for a while. We've got $750,000 that's budgeted. Costs may have gone up, so we've reached out and asked if we can get some additional funding there. Fire rescue, our self-contained breathing apparatuses are in dire need of, of replacement, so we've reached out there, as well as the South Putnam Drainage Project that we got an appropriation for, but our cost assessments are coming back, not the, for the, the preparations won't cover the cost expectations, so we've reached out for some additional funding there. But all these are items that's been discussed before, so we didn't, you know, we just reached out for what we thought was appropriate a little quick with Representative Payne, and I want to say thank you to Representative Payne and his office for doing that. They thought of Putnam County. We really appreciate our relationship in Tallahassee with the representative and, and Representative Payne takes good care of us. So that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Suggs. Okay, County Attorney Rich Commando?
Nothing today, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, move down to Commissioner Comments, I'll start with Commissioner Rawls.
Thank you. I just want to first say for everybody that prayed for our family, we've had a lot of successes in the past two weeks. My, my father-in-law was diagnosed on a Monday and had a tumor removed on the same week, that Friday of that week, and is making a miraculous recovery, to say the least. But I just want to thank everybody for their, their reaching out and for their prayers. I'd like to see if we can get a Port Buena Vista update. I received an email from a constituent a little while ago, asking what's going on. She's got brown water and she said she's fixing to pay her water bill, but she still has brown water. Can we get an update on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll reach out to Mr. Willis and see if we can get an update from Mr. Willis and, and get an email out to the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. Okay, is that all, Commissioner Rawls?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got quite a few items, so I'll be very fast. Last week, I, I was able to drive up to Lake City to meet with Secretary Evans at DOT about some of the county projects, the one recently we signed on the Palm Avenue sidewalk. Talked to him about the asphalt, on asphalt shortages that we're having and how we can work together on that, and it was a very productive meeting and Putnam County was well-represented there with getting our needs out there and trying to find a solution to the problem of the ongoing asphalt situation. Also reached out to Coach Dale Yarborough from Melrose. As you know, the travel team won the state championship and went on to another championship game. We were gonna try to have him here today, but the problem was that they thought, he thought school started today. So he was kind of mixed up on his dates, but what he said, what I'd like to do, and I, and I've already got the ball rolling, no pun intended, we're gonna get baseballs for him, the little county stickers on him, and we'll sign them, and he would like for us all to, if we could be there on opening day, and he'll get that date to me, and we can present those baseballs to the young, young men and the coaches at that point. The floral home project's coming along well, the, but they are running over budget and they're trying to find ways to bring that in, in for a landing also. And I want to pass out something. My position as President of Northeast Florida Regional Council gives me a little bit of a heads up on some items that are coming down. Mr. Rawls, if you'll pass those around. This will be shared pretty soon by Elizabeth Payne, our Director, who will come to Putnam County, but if you just kind of look at the first return on investment, for every dollar we spend, we're getting a $63 return on investment. I think that's pretty darn good, so take a look at this and you'll have time, and when she comes, you'll be able to ask her questions. Also want to thank Commissioner Rawls for serving with me on that board up there, and Mr. Don Holmes, who's also active in there. And the last thing I want to talk about is something the Northeast Florida Regional Council did for Clay County, and it's about their opioid settlement money. And I believe that we really need to look at this going into the future. I'll provide this to our staff, this document of what they, what the Northeast Florida Regional Council did for Clay County under a little contract about having community meetings, partner meetings, and seeing what the need is for Putnam County and going forward with that with the opioid settlement money, because that money will be coming in, not fast and furious, it'll come trickle in here and there, but they helped Clay County put a plan together and it just really sparked my interest that they were involved in that. So those are the end of my comments, Mr. Chairman, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Adamsak?
Yeah, I think I just wanted to say congratulations to all the interns that got recognized today. I think they did a great job. I only got to interact with two of them during the time, but both of them were delightful in the interactions that I had. As far as, everyone's going back to school tomorrow, so all the kids are going back to school, so just everyone be aware, obviously, we always have more traffic by the schools during this time for the first couple of weeks, when parents get used to drop off and pick up, there's gonna be more people picking up their kids the first couple of weeks than other weeks during the year. So just be aware of that when you go by the different schools and you see the flashing lights and all that stuff. Heard a thing on the radio this morning and I guess if you even are holding your phone, Joe, when you go through a school zone, it could be a ticket. So just be aware of that, that, you know, if you're, just don't be distracted when you're in those school zones. I know I've been guilty of it myself, driving down, past Interlock Elementary and just not thinking, but it was good advice on the, on the radio this morning about, you know, just be aware of the school zones and be careful, especially with the crossing guards and watching out for kids. So really exciting times. I'm very excited about the Melrose baseball team. Dale's done a great job for many years. He's a friend of mine. I look forward to doing that and participating with him, Commissioner Harvey, and I, hopefully we all can make it. Great group of kids. They did go to the Nationals and they won their first two games. I, you actually could watch them on the streaming thing, and they, they really kicked rear end. And then just when they got to the semifinals and the finals, they, they ran in some pretty big cities that had teams that I just think they couldn't compete with. I think it was like Greenville, North Carolina and another one, so it's tough for a small town like Melrose to compete against that size. It's not like it was a Putnam County team. I think if we had an all-star Putnam County team, we probably could have taken it, but just, yeah, heads up, that was, that was an awesome event and great to watch that online as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Adamsak.
One more thing, I apologize. In talking to staff earlier, I think we're gonna get the Lee Conley possibly funding on the next workshop. I, I asked for it to be put on there. I have some ideas around it, so I just want to make everyone aware of that and using the letter that Ms. Laurie sent us as a jumping off point, then some discussion we could have to see if there's anything we could possibly do. So I'll try to lead that discussion as best as I can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris Adamsak. And before I turn it over to Commissioner Turner, I want to apologize to him. It was special to be able to recognize the interns and, and, and my personal relationship with each one of them or their families, and I forgot to bring in too that Commissioner Turner is the grandfather of Ms. Leslie Sims. I thought he was quiet and just speechless at the time, because he was tearing up, but I don't think, so I cut him off, so I want to apologize for that before I turn it over to your, your comments, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I am proud of her, but I'm also proud of the other two also. They did a tremendous job for us this year. So, but anyhow, I, I would like to say that I hope we're gonna continue that program. I hope that even during the school year, that maybe we could talk to the college and see if we could get people to come in here, because I'm, I'm well aware of how several, all of the, of those girls really did a, a good job in contributing and helping and what have you. They took on just any task you could get them to do. Hell, I even saw them picking, or putting together chairs one day in the hallway, because they didn't, wasn't busy at the moment. So I mean, they would take on whatever task it was and, and do their best to get it done. And I think that it made a big difference in all of them's life, and I'd like to, to do that again if we could, even working around people's schedule at the college or whatever that would like to come in and intern for us. I think that's just such a special program. I also wanted to make the comment that I want to also go with everybody else and congratulate Mrs. Willock, 35 years, that's pretty special. That's pretty special. And Ms. Trent, I know she does a fine job, but even five years, that's pretty special. So I just wanted to congratulate both of them again and, and wish them both the very best. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. And yeah, 35 years with the, with the Clerk of Court, that is special. And then also, well, Ms. Tia Atkins, I think was gonna retire. She had been in that position on the ship and A-hack committees and just was, had done